All right, very good. I'd like to call the board to select a meeting open today is Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. Seeing it's seven o'clock or a little bit past, what we're going to do is jump right into our schedule items. The first scheduled item is K and M Amusement Center, DBA Merrimack Valley Pavilion Entertainment License Application. So, do we have anyone representing Merrimack Valley Pavilion?
Yes, Angelica Morales.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we get started, this is a public hearing. So, do I have a motion to waive the public, the public reading?
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, be, second, thank you. Because this is a virtual meeting, we're obligated to do a roll call vote for each and every vote, as I tell the residents every week. So why don't we have a bat in order of Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Mark Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Amber Estronik?
Aye.
And Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So we just waived the, for the public, the reading of the public notice. Alright, so the floor is all yours. Please tell us what you're in front of the board for this evening?
Uh, yes, I would like to have a drive-in movie night at MVP's parking lot.
Okay. Um, and just for the residents, I saw all the paperwork was in line. You want to just describe a little bit where the movie's going to be positioned as far as the building and how many folks you're expecting and all that good stuff?
Uh, yes. So, we would probably expect 50 cars to come out, and it would be Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays. Um, and of course, weather permitting, if it's raining, we can't have it. Um, as far as where it would be positioned, I guess we could put on either, um, parallel to Main Street facing into MVP, or we could put it on MVP side facing, um, Main Street. I haven't figured that out yet. Um, I guess we were going to try to see what works best, um, so that we don't make traffic or interfere with anyone driving down Main Street.
Okay, Ms. Morales, I did see a picture. It was maybe like a hand drawing of some sorts, where you had kind of Main Street facing, and that's okay, that's okay, you know, nothing fancy. But the movie screen was kind of like, was, was it behind the building, the placement, like, in that drawing?
No, everything was out. So, the building is to the side, so my parking lot is all on the side only. So, one was facing, um, like, it's back towards Main Street, and one was facing like towards Main Street at the far end of my parking lot.
Okay, okay, I got it. Okay, okay, it makes sense now. Um, and I'm sure the board might have other questions as far, is this the first time you've ever done it, or you've researched it, or you work with the vendor?
Nope, it's the first time I've done it.
Okay, very good. At this point, what I'd like to do, it is a public hearing, what we'll do is we'll hear from the board, and then we'll pause. I'll open up to, for anyone, comments from the public related to this, and we'll close out the public hearing, and we'll make a decision. So why don't we start with the board? How about Mr. Brian Dick? Any questions?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I guess my questions would be, um, so this is an applicant, application to do this for, throughout the whole year, or is it, you're just trying to do it one time?
No, no, no. Weather permitting, so we would like to do it a few weeks until this summer slash fall makes it available to do, for anything fun for families to come out and get out of home. Um, so it would be weather permitting, once it snows, everything, we can't do it. But if it's like a nice, um, weekend, we would like to do it, yes.
Okay, so it's really on your, based on your call, so you would do it either a Thursday, Friday, or Saturday until the snow hits us? Is that kind of what you're thinking?
That's what we're wishing for, but, yeah, I mean, it's what Tuxbury would allow us to do, basically, but we're open to anything.
Okay. And then, this is just to supplement all the great things that you're doing now as a business in Tuxbury?
Yes, because we can't do anything. Well, we have mini golf, and people are enjoying that, but that'll get boring soon if you're mini golfing a lot.
But this is to kind of add to your sales numbers based on, with the pandemic?
Yeah.
And all the challenges with that. How about, how about the vendor? Tell me a little bit about the vendor that you're using. Is it, is it reputable? Is it something that they're just jumping into, because I know these are kind of hot items?
No, so I purchase everything. I will purchase the screen, the projector, the radio transmitter, and then I have to purchase licensing through a company for the production of the movies. So, we're going to be using Swank. Swank will give us the permission to view the movie we're viewing for that week, um, and then I pay them the fee for the productions.
Okay, so you're, you're going to own the, the apparatus and manage the sound and, and all that. Have you had any, um, any feedback from any of the butters?
I have not, no.
Okay. All right, um, you know, as I, as we go through this crazy time, uh, as a businessman myself, I understand, uh, sales are down, and anything that can, you know, I, I do know you have a very large parking lot, and that location, you do have some outdoor activities, so this is kind of complement the mini golf. And I know before that, long time before that, there, there was the go-karts and things like that, that, that location. So, um, not that you have that now, right? I don't think you have that.
No.
So, um, yeah, I, you know, I, I support the effort to try to keep businesses alive at this time. So, you know, really, my question's around, like, how are you going to do this? You, you said you're basically going to have the, the apparatus, and then, you know, I, I don't know if, Mr. Chair, if there should be a time limit on something like this, then like open up indefinitely, like this, you know, I don't know if it's till the end of the fall, and then, uh, if, if it was a success, or if it works, uh, maybe they, they can go come back in the spring. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good, thank you. How about Mr. Mark Kratman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I took a tour of the facility today. I've spoken to Angelica a number of times about this, uh, when she was talking about bringing this in. The parking lot is very large. Um, I think it's an ideal, uh, location to put something like this on. Uh, there's really a mosh behind the location, so it's, uh, the projection, I don't think is going to affect shining on any residents of where it's going to be happening. Uh, there's a lot, like I said, there's going to be shine, the screen being toward a mosh area. Um, and, uh, I think the, the business is hurting, and a lot of our businesses are hurting. And I think, after seeing what's going on down there today, there was only a couple of vehicles there. I know you're working very hard to keep the place in business. I applaud you for staying with this, coming up with a couple of different ideas to keep businesses, and I, and I think the community's going to love this. Um, I, I know that a couple of other businesses are thinking about doing the same thing, but having people outdoors, a little bit of fresh air, um, and, uh, you know, and social distancing as people are in their own vehicles, staying away. Uh, I think this is a great idea, getting people out and, uh, and helping a small business. So, I'm in full support of it. So, thank you very much for bringing it in front of us.
Thank you.
Perfect, very good. How about Ms. Tronik?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first of all, I, um, want to, uh, thank you for bringing this forward. I agree with my colleagues about, um, enhancing your business and supporting that wholeheartedly. I do agree that the space lends itself to that. I also noted, um, that our department heads all signed off on it, and the only concern seemed to be about the handicap spaces, that we were not going to be using those. The one department that typically does not, um, sign off is the police department, and if it would be acceptable to you, Mr. Chairman, I would love it if the police department could go down. I know she hasn't decided exactly where that's going to be, but if, from our traffic standpoint, um, as she noted, it would be important to make sure that we're not impacting traffic down there. If they could just take a look at that and support her efforts in, uh, making sure that we have the correct location before that equipment goes up, I think that would be helpful. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. So, no questions, just comments, and, um, thank you very much for, um, trying to remain a viable option. Thank you.
Very good. And how about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you very much. Um, most of my questions were asked and answered already by my colleagues, so thank you. Um, I'm, I agree, I'm excited to see, uh, businesses working for great opportunities, um, to stay, stay thriving in this kind of market economy. Um, I wanted to know how you're going to handle ticket sales, um, sales for your business during, uh, these movie nights?
Yes. So, once, um, I was just, I have everything ready, um, so once it was approved, we're going to be pre-selling them online. So, we would have an online, um, it's already all set up, just waiting for the approval, and then it would go live, we would post the movie that we're going to be showing, um, and then tickets will go on sale there. And if they would have to buy them there, they would come in and park, and my employees would come out and get it, so that we're not causing any traffic on Main Street.
Um, will you, has the police department determined if you need detail officers? I don't know if that was, uh, okay, so I'm a part of that assessment that, um, Ms. Tronik requested. I think that makes sense. Um, and will you be opening the business for laser tag and mini golf and so forth at the same time?
So, um, the governor just said we will not be able to open laser tag. Arcade has not been opened. So, we only have mini golf open, and the movies would start at roughly 8:30, and at that time, we would be closing mini golf, because it would be a distraction with the lights from mini golf anyway, so we couldn't have both things going. Um, we do sell like our chicken and french fries, and we'll have popcorn inside the building, and customers could come to the window and order and walk it to their cars.
All right, thank you. That's very exciting, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no further comments. And I say, Ms. Morales, I drive by that every day. It's right in my house. I'm pulling for you. Uh, now we have another gentleman, um, we're going to see, uh, talk, you know, in a few minutes here to the board as far as stimulating his business, uh, and getting creative. So, we feel for you, and to Mr. Kratman's point, um, the parking lot is, is, is not that full nowadays, and, and we totally get it. So, hopefully, hopefully, this can help a little bit, um, and get that parking lot, uh, full. So, at this time, what I'd like to do is open up to the public. Do we have any public comments, Brian, um, for this particular agenda item?
No callers, Mr. Chairman, but we are about, uh, 30 to 45 seconds behind.
I have to start getting ahead of this, I should say that, 30 seconds ago, so then we can go, just move along. But, um, why don't we do this? Let's close the public hearing in heck. Put, yes?
I have a, I have a quick question, follow-up question, if I could ask that question. Um, Ms. Morales, I did see, I think you have a liquor license on the premises, correct?
That is correct.
Is that just, is that beer and wine?
Yeah, it's beer and wine, and there's going to be signs posted everywhere that it has to stay in the patio or inside.
Okay. So, the, you will be serving alcohol, but it has to stay on the premises?
Yes, it has to stay either on my patio or inside the building, because we are, we do allow our customers to come in and sit down there. All of our tables are six feet apart with the social distancing, so they can enjoy it inside the building, um, or just get a soda.
Yeah, okay. So, you'll, you'll be able to control that if, uh, drinking does occur on the?
Uh, well, we could see if we serve one where they're walking to, yes, and we could stop them there. Yes, we could definitely do that, because we have to serve it and give it to them in their hand, and we could just, you know, view it and monitor that as it's happening. And signs will be everywhere, and if they don't follow the rules, they'll be asked to leave.
All right, I just wanted, uh, for the record, just, you do have an alcoholic beverage license. Okay, as long as that's controlled, I'm, I'm still fine with everything. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brian Dick, for the 40 seconds buffer there. So, Brian, anyone on, uh, anyone on the line?
We do have a caller. Uh, caller, whenever you're ready.
And just name, just name an address for the record, please?
Uh, Alice McKenzie, DeCarlos Drive.
One, I'm, I'm sorry, one, one more time on that, please?
Uh, Alice McKenzie, DeCarlos Drive.
Okay, okay.
I have found this, uh, place, and a lot of times right now, by 10 o'clock, the music is so loud, that a lot of people in the, in the complex, it's a condo complex, cannot sleep because of the noise. And we're concerned about the place being open till 11 o'clock, and if anybody's drinking and all the people are leaving, this is, it's going to be an accident somewhere.
Okay, so it's very, it's very, can anyone else, I'm, I'm having a very difficult time hearing the caller user, is anyone can?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think the caller was concerned about, um, the 11 o'clock time of, of being open, and then, um, I think she had some questions about maybe the loudness of the audio at that time, and then some concerns about the alcohol. I think, I think that's what she was trying to say.
I concur.
And the bright lights as well. I mean, we live right, right behind the, the pavilion.
And what street? Again, I didn't catch the name or address, maybe my colleagues have.
Carlos Drive. It's like, the pavilion, it's true the noise.
Mr. Chairman, I think she's saying DeCarlos.
Oh, okay.
DeCarlos.
Thank you.
DeCarlos.
Okay. And let's talk about, let's just address quickly the noise. Is it, for the movie theater, is it going to be, uh, one of those things where you turn on your radio on the FM or AM?
That is correct. So, it'll just be through car radios. There's going to be no loud speakers out. There's going to be no lights. The only light that's going to be on is going to be the movie, um, and that'll be all the way towards the other side, not even close to the condos, the parking lot. So, my building buffers those lights. I believe the lights she's probably talking about is my mini golf lights. Those would be off. Um, and as far as the music, MVP's never, we close at 10, so there's never music past 10 at MVP anyway. Um, we close at 10 Fridays and Saturdays, and Monday, uh, Sunday through Thursday, we close at 9. Um, I can definitely turn the music down, but we're never open past 10.
And, and that's fine. And I'm not aware, I'm not if the board's aware of any, uh, police callings, recent police callings. Typically, we, we do get those updates, and I'm not aware of any, um, you know, we can certainly, uh, check, but like I said, I think you're in very, very good standards with the community in the town.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, is, is the caller still on?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay, and like we do, like when we, you know, whether we're going to approve or deny it, we're going to get to that shortly. If there's any issues, you know, what we typically do, when we do issue a permit of this magnitude, is simply call, you know, if you have any issues, call 911, and they work, obviously, the police will work with the board if there's any such, whatever the complaint may be. So, again, we're, thank you for the comments.
Another number of times, it's supposed to be open till 10 o'clock. By the past 10, the music is still very, very loud. And I've called the police, and they're right up there about five minutes later.
Okay, well, no, you can come, Ms. Morales, you can come right through me to the board, just, you know, come through me. But, you know, duly noted, points duly noted, and like I said, I'm not aware of any. Um, I will take a follow-up action, uh, on behalf of the board, just to see if there's been any complaints. But like I said, we would have, uh, heard of them, but like I said, I will take that action.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Brian, any more callers?
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, see, no more callers? I like to, I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Brian Dick, all right. Roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Ms. Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So, at this point, the public hearing is closed. So, what is the pleasure of the board? It sounds to me like, uh, it was favorable. However, I know there was discussed, um, a few potential amendments. One was around the timelines, like when do we end it as far as a date? And the other one was obviously, a big one here is, um, is to work with the police. So, if we do approve, to work with the police department, uh, to work with Ms. Morales, to understand what we're doing, and essentially have them sign off. And if, uh, police department does not sign off, obviously, uh, it would be a no vote, a no go, and you would have to come back for whatever reason. So, uh, with that being said, what is the pleasure of the board? Um, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I would like to make a motion to approve the license on, from, um, effective August 11th, 2020 to November 15th, 2020, with the approval, pending the approval of the Tuxbury Police Department of the application and the location of the screen.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tronik.
And review of the, I'm sorry, and review of the, um, alcohol procedures.
Alcohol and screen location, okay. I mean, that's typical anyways, you know, they're going to do the due diligence and, um, you know, walk through all the scenarios. So, okay, thank you very much for that amendment. So, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Wellman. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Mr. Brian Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mark Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Okay, um, Ms. Morales, I don't think you're going anywhere in the fact that you're next on the list as well. So, we have another, um, this is a 7:05, a little bit past, that's fine. Uh, K and M Amusement Center, DBA, Merrimack Valley Pavilion, Alteration of Premise Application. So, again, this is a public hearing, so I have a motion to read the public notice.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. All right, roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Mark Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
All right, and chair votes aye as well. All right, Ms. Morales, the floor is yours again.
Hi, um, so this application was for my laser tag arena. Um, this was, um, taking place before the pandemic hit us. Um, but what we're trying to do is move our, I, the arcade into the arena, since we do have a two-floor, 6,600 square foot laser tag arena, and we want to cut it by maybe, um, two-thirds, just the first floor, and put the, every, um, the arcade in there, instead of it being out where the customers eat.
Okay, and what's the, what's the rationale there? Just what's the business-like case? Just so we understand?
Um, it was just to move the arcade in there, because our laser tag arena is so big that it's just wasted space. Um, our customers don't use the first floor, so we kind of analyze everything, and we think that would be a better move, um, for business. And then it'll give customers more of a privacy and a better arcade. We'll be getting all brand-new games and new card systems, everything brand-new for the customers to come and enjoy, um, instead of our really old games we have.
Okay, and just for the residents, so what, same deal here, I'll open up to the board, and we'll listen to any public comments. Uh, as far as the paperwork, I think the paperwork is all in line, meaning all the different departments come down, uh, and verify everything is cool. Um, and we do, so it was a lot of paperwork. Again, it was all in, all in line with no issues found. So, at this point, what I'd like to do is open up the board for questions or comments. So, why don't we start again? Um, I'm going to reverse order. How about Ms. Wellman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I reviewed all the paperwork. It was all in order. Um, I thought you did a great job. I've, I've been inside your facility a number of times. It's a, it's a great facility, the, particularly with the, um, restrictions on social distancing, it makes sense, and it's a good time to invest in your business right now. So, I'm glad that you were bringing this forward, and I support your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
How about Ms. Tronik?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think that everything is in order here. Um, Jane just alluded to following the social distancing. That's the only comment from our department heads. And given that she just said that right now she's unable to, um, use that space, uh, because of the governor's orders, I think this is a great time to do that. So, I'm very supportive of this initiative.
Okay, very good. How about Mr. Mark Kratman?
Um, I, like, once again, I, I've been in the, the facility a number of places. Uh, I think this is an excellent idea. This is creating jobs for the children in our community. Uh, Ms. Morales hires a number of kids in our community. Mr. Morris, I've spoken to him about, um, some of the alterations and some of the work of what he wants to do, and try to do something to make it simpler for people to get in and out of the building, and how social distancing, they've done everything that we've asked for. Um, it's a smart plan. It's a great use of location. It creates jobs, and, uh, and it gets people back to somewhat of a better life with social distancing the best we can. And I want to keep, uh, small businesses thriving in Tuxbury, so I'm in full support.
All right, good deal. How about, um, very good deal. How about Mr. Brian Dick?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, same here. So, what I'd like to do, Brian, anyone on the, um, do we have any residents on the line?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so what if we, what if we will, let's close the public hearing, and if someone calls in within the next minute, you know, 7:28, then we'll certainly, uh, listen to that residence. So, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All right, how do we vote? Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Jane Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So, let's move right on. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve the Alteration of Premises Application as presented tonight.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much, Ms. Morales, and good luck. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, bye.
Okay, very good. Next order of business, Wallace Entertainment Center, Entertainment License Application. Same deal here, it's a public hearing. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. All right, um, Mr. McLaren, you know the drill. What we'll do is, um, you know, you'll have the floor, um, we'll, we'll, we'll pass it to the board, we'll open up for public comments, you know, just like we did. So, you're a veteran at this. So, why don't, the floor is yours, my friend.
Thank you very much, uh, very much, Mr. Kelly. Um, thank you, everybody, for your time. So, we're proposing something similar. I mean, we, we looked back at, uh, in, in May to try to do something similar to this. Obviously, with some restrictions and some timeline issues, uh, we couldn't pursue, but, um, we're here trying to do something similar with the movie night. Um, August 30th is our first date that we're looking to do. We're partnering up with the TMHS, uh, pack with, uh, Chrissy Palomino and, uh, and the rest of their crew with, uh, Erin and Sharon. So, we're, uh, we're pretty excited about what we got putting together here. We're, we're expecting about, um, 150 cars. Uh, we've got, um, I think it's been communicated already that we need a police detail. You guys have a conver, uh, copy of, uh, all the questions that we had had back in May. Also have a copy of all the, um, uh, the map that we had done, and how we're going to do our traffic flow, how we're going to, how we're going to sort through that, and, uh, how we're going to pre-sell our tickets, pre-sell 100%, and, um, and put all of our proceeds towards, um, TMHS, uh, pack as well with that stuff. So, um, should be a good night. I mean, this is a lot of stuff that, uh, that people are trying to get creative with, uh, no different than, um, than, um, than how she, the woman who, before I just spoke. So, um, we're trying to do the same thing, trying to get creative, and, uh, we want to utilize our parking lot on a, on Sunday nights, but are looking to even expand beyond that. So, if we had an extended, uh, period of time, that would, that would certainly make sense. There's a lot of time and effort that we put into this stuff. We're hiring a third-party vendor to come in and, uh, and put the stuff together, because it's important to have, um, certainly all the right equipment and, and be safe. So, um, we don't know enough about it. We're going to learn from the best, and then we'll, we'll, we'll probably take a look at, maybe purchase our own stuff. But, uh, it's all commercial-rated. It's all, it's all the, the high-level, uh, stuff that we're looking to use, so.
Okay, Ms., okay. Yeah, and I can tell, just for the residents, too, the paperwork was very extremely thorough, um, and it got all the improvements from the various department heads. Uh, Mr. McLaren, how about as far as time? Are you looking for August 31st, August 30th to 31st of September 1st, just for this particular permit?
Yeah, right now, we're looking to try to just do the, uh, the August 30th, one big bang on a, on a Sunday, but this is our trial run. We want to do everything correct. We want to have the correct experience. We want to make sure we, we nail this thing down. So, uh, we are looking to do, um, additional nights with this. I mean, even no different than maybe trying to go into November as well, and having, uh, having that stuff light up. But I, we're looking to just do the Sunday nights, because the, the Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, um, and weekend nights, it just doesn't, it just don't work for us with our business model. So, we're just looking to try to utilize those Sunday nights, and if we can kind of do the same thing into November, uh, at least gives us the flexibility to, uh, to go back to the drawing board, make sure everything makes sense, and raise as much money as we can, uh, for, you know, um, for groups like this. Uh, Chrissy Palomino's got a great thing going with the, with the rest of the girls, and I just, I appreciate their help and assistance with, with this stuff, and, uh, I think it's going to be a great night.
Okay, very good. At this point, I'd like to do is, um, let's open up to the board for comments. Like I said, then we'll see if there's anyone, any callers. So, that's the hint for callers to call in now. So, uh, why don't we start at the top? How about Mr. Brian Dick?
Oops, sorry about that. Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thanks, Mr. McLaren, and Ms. Palomino, and Sazlin, and I think Mr. Waxaf coming on today, tonight. Um, I think the Wallace is a great organization. I think they, they, they try to do all the right things. Um, we've, we've done a lot of, a lot of entertainment, uh, applications with them, um, and, and I feel confident this is, this is going to be a good one. Things for a good cause, which I totally support, 100%. Um, I did see, the application said the 30th, 31st, and 1st, and I know Ms. McLaren was saying maybe potentially beyond that, so maybe that's a, a change that we can talk about when we vote. But the application did say the 30th, 31st, and 1st, just to make it official. And then, um, the only question I really had was, all two, I guess, um, if you've heard from any of the butters? if you've heard from any of the Butters, and then the second question is the alcohol sales, how are you gonna control that in outdoor environment like you do now, I think?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so I have not heard, uh, anything from the Butters. I had sent out, uh, a Butters, the Butters list, the Butters of Butters, and then the Butters beyond three hundred, uh, feet, like it was a tremendous amount of, uh, letters that went out, so, uh, haven't heard anything, uh, yet from anybody. Uh, the alcohol sales, we're just gonna run it the same way, just on our patio. It's exactly where we, we hold our liquor license and all that stuff, so everybody will have access that can buy, um, buy any products, uh, that way, right on our patio, so.
So again, I, um, just full disclosure, I am in a Butter, so I do see the parking lot is empty a lot, um, right now, which is a very hard thing for your business. Uh, my heart goes out to you, uh, knowing, you know, what you're doing, what you're trying to do in town. And, um, so I support, you know, the effort to, to, um, combine, uh, with the schools, we appreciate that, as always. Uh, you're always good to the nonprofits, not-for-profits, so I, I support this, and, um, those are all my questions that I have tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thanks.
Very good. How about Mr. Mark?
Um, I have no, uh, additional questions. I think we've pretty much gone over all everything that we need to go over. The same thing, pretty much as the previous, uh, civil, but thank you.
All right, very good. How about Ms. Tronick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I do have a question. Is your speaker system through the cars as well?
Yes, we will have, uh, the FM transmitters as well. However, the only difference that we'll have is we'll have an FM transmitter built in within the patio, so while people are sitting on the patio, they'll also be able to hear the movie from there, but no different than before, it doesn't go above our decibels, uh, everything's controlled and, and contained, so we won't have any issues there.
Um, great, thank you. And, um, similar to the last question, where exactly will the movie screen be? Your parking lot's a little bit bigger, I'm not as worried about traffic out on thirty-eight. Have you talked to the police department where your screen is gonna sit?
Yeah, we've submitted exactly where it would be on a, um, on a, on a, uh, a site plan.
Yep.
And, uh, our screen, our screen will be right out by our street sign, facing our building, so lighting and everything will be projected towards us, and, uh, the cars will be facing towards the street. So traffic flow and everything works, uh, as it needs to, safely.
Terrific. I wanted to make sure the residents were aware of that. I am very supportive of this, um, similar to the last business. I think it's a hard time for entertainment, um, to stay viable, so I'm really excited about this. I think that this is a great way for families to get together. Um, I fond memories of my own childhood with drive-in theaters, so I like this concept. Um, what I would also like to say is I would be amenable to other board members to extend this to November fifteenth as well, if other people are feeling that. I know that we would have to make an adjustment to the application, um, and you would have to put that into writing. I would be amenable to that. And I have no further questions.
All right, very good, thank you. How about, um, how about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you very much. Um, Ms. McLaren, I want to congratulate you, the package was fantastic, and I really liked the FAQs you had in there, I liked all the information you had on, um, the police details and the sit, the ticket sales and all that stuff, it was great. You answered all my questions there. Um, the other questions I had are already, Griffin has some questions, I guess. Um, so anyway, no, I, I, I know, there we go. Um, no, I think it's, uh, you did a great job, and I'm excited for it, and I support all of your efforts in this regard, so, um, and, and I'm happy to make a motion to approve your entertainment license. Um, and I didn't know if you were interested in extending it now or coming back later after September first, depending on how it goes, but I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, but.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate everything that you said. I would, I would certainly look to extend it. Uh, one thing for sure with having the dates that we already have, I mean, one of the, the bigger issues is, is rain days, right? So we were thinking about maybe Sunday, if, if everything doesn't go up on Sunday, utilize Monday, Monday, then, then Tuesday. But at least the thirtieth, the thirty-first, and the first fall in line with this kind of submission, just in case, uh, we do get rained out or something like that, we'll just move it to a Monday or, or a Tuesday. But again, to Ms. Tronick's, uh, point, yeah, I would love to extend it out and, um, and, and make sure that everything goes as, as planned, so when we do have the flexibility, we can do it again.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you all of you. Jay, you're muted. Now he's disappearing.
All right, I thought I was in control, I guess I'm not, but, um, I was just gonna echo what Ms. Wellman said, the package was extremely detailed, Mr. McLaren, so I thank you for that and your team. Um, so I have no further questions. So at this point, what I'd like to do is open up to the public. Um, Brian, do we have anyone on the line?
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, same deal here. Why don't we go ahead and close out the public hearing, look for a motion, and if any of, um, residents call, then we can certainly entertain those calls. So with that being said, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a, thank you, I have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick? And Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well to close the public hearing. So what is the pleasure of the board? I know, obviously, we have the application in front of us, and we al- also talked about potentially an amendment, an amendment, uh, like we did to the previous, um, previous applicant. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd make a motion to, uh, pretty much, I'd like to see these things stay in, uh, conformity with the other permits that we're issuing, so, um, with that, I'd make a motion to, to, uh, issue a, uh, permit or approval of this application, um, until November fifteenth. Um, um, as long as they follow the guidelines and get the approval and the sign-offs and everything, there's no problem with the traffic as we've already discussed. Um, so I'm making a, a amendment to approve it till November fifteenth, and then you can come back in the spring to see how it goes from there.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kratman. So I have a motion, I have a second.
Come for discussion?
Please.
Uh, just if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Kratman, to make a friendly amendment that they resubmit the application with the correct dates.
Yep.
Mr. McLaren, okay.
Not a problem.
Okay, so I have a motion, uh, and I have a second. Any other further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Amberie Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Jane Wellman?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well. Thank you guys very much. Good luck. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All righty, moving to our next, thank you, guys. Thank, no, uh, moving to the next order of business, actually brings us to residents, uh, for public comments. Do we have any residents, Brian, at this time?
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
All right, why don't we do this? We'll skip a little bit of buffer. Um, so if residents do call in, we'll certainly get them in like we always want to. Um, so let's just move quickly to new business. So under new business, we have poll worker appointments. And I do believe, I saw Ms. Denise Gracie, uh, Denise Graffio out there? Uh-oh, do we have Denise? Uh-oh.
Muted.
We gotta get rid of that red microphone.
I'm here.
Perfect, okay. And, and just for the residents, want to just give a quick highlight, um, of this, of the, uh, poll workers' appointments?
Sure, so each year I submit a list of recommended poll workers to the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Mass General laws for your consideration and vote on appointments. So all of the, um, poll workers that I submitted, um, are Tewksbury residents, and, um, at this point, um, legislation has recently passed that if I am unable to staff the polls with the list of poll workers that I have submitted to you due to, um, COVID reasons, health reasons, um, that I'm able to, um, use anybody else that is available and healthy and willing to work the polls for the upcoming, uh, September primary and November election. And so this is just a standard, standard annual appointment process.
Okay, very good, perfect, and thank you for highlighting that for the residents. So, uh, any comments or questions from the board?
I have a quick one.
Ms. Wellman, please.
Um, so this is, this is fantastic. You always do a great job bringing forward the appointments, and it's clear, and you can see where the disclosures are, and it's, you've got a lot of folks. Um, I wondered if, how, what your, uh, feedback is for folks that may not want to work the election because of the pandemic, um, and then how the emergency appointments work if, if you need to go to something beyond what's on these lists. That's the, just that little piece.
Um, so, uh, that's a good question. Um, so we have eight precincts in Tewksbury, and each precinct is, um, has a warden that I charge with helping to create precinct teams for our election. Um, basically, the wardens are in charge of everything that happens at that precinct and report back to me, um, as far as, um, you know, any issues that, that they have. Um, and I, I do that because the, uh, election wardens have a really good feel for, um, the relationships, the knowledge of the workers, and we have an awesome, amazing team that, um, you know, honestly, I can't, I can't speak highly enough about the team that we have in place, um, as, as far as their knowledge and their dedication to the election process. Um, so, you know, we understand that due to the pandemic, there are certain people that, um, do not feel comfortable, and it's, it's their choice, um, to, to, if they decide that they don't want to work for, um, these elections, which is why we have the alternate list, um, which is a list of people that have, um, you know, submitted their applications, and some of them have worked in the past and some haven't worked in the past. Um, but they, I do have a training prior to every election, um, that, you know, if they haven't worked, they will get a good training before they, before they go, um, in, in work that day. Um, we do have a contingency plan, um, there's personal protections in place for the election staff and the voters. Um, we have, um, you know, plenty of personal, uh, protection, uh, trainings, uh, supplies. Uh, we have barriers up for the election workers. Election, election workers are required to wear masks. We ask voters to wear masks, and so the contingency plan is online. Um, election staff are trained on those, um, protections, and, you know, we're, we're doing the best that we can, voting during a pandemic is, uh, a bit challenging, but, um, I'm really proud of my staff and, um, and I'm confident that we're gonna be able to, um, implement, uh, elections in Tewksbury for the upcoming, upcoming big ones.
Where will you be, this is my last question, where will you be processing mail-in ballots?
Well, um, so the Secretary of State is still, um, working on the regulations for that. So my plan for them is at a central tabulation facility in Town Hall, in the, um, small meeting room, and I'm gonna designate that as a central tabulation facility. The new legislation has allowed us to process ballots prior to Election Day, which is the first time that this is happening. So we're waiting on those regulations. As soon as I get those, then I will be sure to communicate that to, um, to the, the voters and to everybody, so that everybody is aware of how we're gonna be tabulating the ballots. Um, all of that is open, um, to the public for viewing and, um, transparent, so that everybody, um, you know, has the opportunity to come in and view what's happening.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I got my mail-in ballot, I appreciate it. Thank you and all of your staff for everything that you do to keep our elections, uh, functioning at its high level. You did a great job with the town election as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions from the board members? Okay, seeing none, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to, uh, appoint all the poll, poll worker appointments presented tonight by Mrs. Graffio.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, uh, Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much. Thank you, Denise, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, just looking at our next order of business, I do believe it is.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, sorry to interrupt, but we do have a caller on the line.
Oh, excellent, very good, okay. And just for the residents, just the name and address, please, for the record?
Yeah, hi, my name is Maduna Ryan, um, and I'm at Eight Water Road in Tewksbury.
Okay.
Um, I'm calling about the Human Rights Committee. Um, I just wanted to call in some for that, and if I could have a few minutes to just, like, explain, um, you know, why, why I'd like to see this commissioning before.
Okay, very good, the floor is yours.
Okay, um, so I wrote in earlier today, um, as well to the board, uh, just expressing that I'm a new mom or an expecting mom, a new resident, and my husband and I are really excited about moving to Tewksbury and seeing a lot of the proposals that have been posted online about public spaces, being able to make the town a much more appealing place to live, work, and really be an attraction to businesses, residents, and families. And I think that the Human Rights Commission would be just another way to advocate for, um, various, various issues like that. So small businesses that are minority and women-owned, that might need a little bit more support from the community who don't, who doesn't have, um, you know, such a, a wide network. And then also a way to advocate for various issues that come up in our citizens' population. As we all know, across the country, there is a huge resurgence of attention into the Black Lives Matter movement and other similar movements, even, um, as far as child and sex trafficking, um, really being able to bring forward those issues and movements to the community, advocate and educate for those issues, and then, um, just being, being able to really support those movements from a local standpoint, but thinking globally, knowing that our community isn't in a bubble, um, and that we are a part of the larger fabric of not only Massachusetts, but also the United States. I think that it's important for a- all of our residents to be involved, informed, and be able to speak, um, intelligently about these matters. So that's really only going to come from being able to have a forum, to ask questions, understand some of these deeper issues that are, in fact, really difficult to talk about, and the resources online can be really divisive or confusing, and just being able to give students, um, schools, other residents the ability to kind of learn more about these issues, and then, um, you know, really move our, our town forward. So that's, that's a little bit about why I'd like to see the Human Rights Commission be formed.
Okay, thank you very much, it's timely. We are gonna talk about that in a little bit, so thank you very much for writing in. And just for the residents, we did get a number of folks, um, writing in to the board, um, in favor of getting the Human Rights Committee going. So I thank you very much. Thank you for being part of the community, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, Brian, anyone else, Brian?
No other callers, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. I think the next, I do believe it's the state primary election warrant, and Mr. Montori, keep me honest here, I think this is really just to highlight, um, to approve, um, the warrant for Tuesday, the first day of September, again, the primary for twenty-twenty, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, that said, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommenda, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, um, the, um, election has presented.
Perfect, yep, the state primary election warrant, perfect. Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All right, roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well, unanimous. All right, the next order of business here is constable appointments. However, we already have taken care of that, so we're just gonna move right along here. Um, the next one here is the Board of Regis, Regis, uh, yes.
Um, I'm not sure the Board has, uh, reappointed the constables specifically. There, I think they were off the, uh, reappointment list when the Board discussed reappointments early July.
Okay.
And they were all the same individuals, they're just reappointments, there were no new ones.
Okay, and I think we, uh, we got an email, like, forwarded to the Board, so is the Board comfortable with the reappointments? Did you see the, the email, like Mr. Montori said, it's the same one we got July, I believe it was July fifteenth? Like Mr. Montori said, it's the same one we got July, I believe it was July 15th.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion to reappoint the constables submitted in the application to the board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kratman. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Wellman. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Okay, let's take a roll call vote. Mr. Bryan Dick.
Aye.
Mr. Kratman.
Aye.
Ms. Tronick.
Aye.
Ms. Wellman.
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Montori, for the correction. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there were some other appointments on here for reappointments, the open space, the athletics committee, the taxation committee. I wanted to make sure that those were all set and if they, I believe that.
Good call. So I skipped that exactly. So we had, we had Ted Bazinski for open space and recreation, we had Christine Palamino for the Tuxbury School Athletic Fields, Christopher Mullen for the Community Preservation Committee, and, and we had the, what was it, two others as well? Ms. Tronick, do you have?
Joanne Foley for the Board of Assessors Chair and for the Taxation Committee, and Kelly O'Donnell as the Treasurer Collector on that committee as well. And with that said, I'll make a motion to approve all of those reappointments as those two were provided to us in July and need to be reappointed. And those terms are effective until June 30th, 2021.
Perfect. Okay, perfect. Thank you for catching that.
I would like to note the records of the minutes that the constables are to 2023. Just a matter of housekeeping for the minutes.
Okay. Very good. And thank you for, I missed the, I missed the appointments here, so thank you for that. Ms. Tronick. So with that being said, we have a motion on the table for the five individuals that Ms. Tronick referenced. What is, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Wellman. All right, roll call vote. Mr. Bryan Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman.
Aye.
Ms. Tronick.
Aye.
Ms. Wellman.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, so let's see if I can keep up with the agenda here. So I do believe the next one is, keep me honest here, team, the Board of Register appointment, correct?
Well, we, Mr. Chairman, appointments to Council Economic Development Committee and so forth, new appointments.
What's that, Ms. Wellman? Sorry, broke up.
There are also appointments, some unaccompanied.
I'm getting a lot of racket here. So if, if, if we're not on, can we just hit the mute button, please? So why don't we, why don't we go with those four? What we're going to do, we're going to continue with boards and committees, Ms. Wellman, to our next meeting, September 1st, just to do housekeeping. So I think we're current, but for those, I don't see those, so why don't we just, if it's cool, why don't we wait till September 1st, if that's okay?
Aye, aye.
Okay. Okay, very good. Okay. Again, okay, so the next, getting back to the Board of Register's appointments, I do not have the specific, I believe this was for the Tuxbury Republican Town Committee. I don't have the individual. Does anyone have the individual name? I'm trying to look for that note.
Yes, it's Mr. David Chow.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kratman. Okay. So what is the pleasure of the board? What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Richard Chow to the Republican Committee.
Okay, thank you. I have a second.
Uh, I think we're appointing the registrars.
Yep. Correct. Correct.
My mouth is not working today. I appreciate that.
Right, so I'll second that motion to the Board of Register's appointment.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Bryan Dick. All right, thank you for the correction. All right, let's take a roll call vote. Mr. Bryan Dick.
Aye.
Mr. Kratman.
Aye.
Ms. Wellman.
Aye.
Ms. Tronick.
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. All right, next order of business is the agenda correspondence, correct? Yeah, the agenda correspondence. So maybe Ms. Wellman would like to do is, you brought this for, you know, as an agenda item, so maybe discuss this a little bit. I know we kind of socialized it during our last selectmen meeting, we wanted to bring it on the agenda to kind of talk through it for the residents, and I know Mr. Montori, you know, we've had a few conversations, you and I, but maybe just at a high level, want to describe kind of what this is all about?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the board's indulgence this evening. This, I brought this forward because we do get correspondence from time to time that's sent to the entire board. So either from a resident, or it might be from NIMCOG, for instance, whatever it is that comes to the board in general. My interest is in, in the interest of transparency and including it in our agendas, perhaps as a consent calendar item. So not necessarily something that we need to talk about during meetings, if somebody wants to address a particular item of correspondence, that's fine, but more it's, it's just to kind of represent and show that the residents or, or whoever is up to the committee and, and we have it, we've seen it, we, you know, have it in front of us. There are all kinds of rules around how you can really respond to correspondence due to open meeting law and all that kind of stuff. So I think sometimes things go in and people don't necessarily know that they're, they've been seen. So I think it's good also for the public to see what we're seeing in terms of what folks are interested in us talking about, what they want to see us take up as agenda items. And also particularly, for example, with like NIMCOG, they send us information on public comment for something that's coming up, a project, things like that. So LRTA has those kinds of things as well. So this is general correspondence to the board, not to one particular member, but to the board in general. And so we, we've done this on the school committee, when, when I was on school committee, we did that. Number of our, you know, other cities and towns do that kind of thing as a pro forma sort of activity, and that's my interest in. So see what's covered, what the board is.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wellman. Well, I'll open up to the board, but I guess to Ms. Wellman's point, we do get a lot of emails, and sometimes we can take care of that issue or whatever, that subject, right away, and it doesn't make the agenda. Sometimes we actually take an email and we push it to the agenda, because we have to be very sensitive when we reply as a quorum, as a board. You know, we have to do all our business in public, and, and so I think the point is, is really, we get, do get a lot of emails, so the real point is, we'll have a regular agenda item, and then Mr. Montori would work, Mr. Montori, I still think we need some framework. I'm not sure we're ready for a vote, but then we'll kind of decide what we'll put as a correspondence item versus what we won't, because I think we have needed a little more homework, but I do believe it's a good idea. So I'll, I'll pause there and let's open up to the board for questions, either through Jane, myself, or Richard. Why don't we start with Mr. Bryan Dick?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I understand Ms. Wellman's reason for bringing this up. There is a lot of correspondence. However, I, I do, I think there's, there's definitely a place, there's some framework that could be put in place to help with that and, you know, give full transparency, lack of a better word, I don't like using that word, because I think we're transparent, but just giving, you know, some of the background information in a packet. But I do think the town manager needs to vet that information. I'm very concerned about putting names and, and with letters and things like that, that concerns me a little bit. I don't like a lot of, like a lot of drama, I guess, around that type of stuff. So, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to have the town manager kind of weigh in. I think, I think he supports this framework, but, but there needs to be, I, I'd like to, I'm not prepared to make any type of votes tonight on this item, but I'd, I'd like to hear maybe his thoughts around the, around the agenda correspondence. Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I can jump in now, if that's okay?
Please, please.
So as you mentioned, we, we've discussed this, and I've discussed this with selectmen and Wellman, and I think this is something that can be done fairly easily. I agree, though, that we should have a framework that the board reviews and probably votes on, and I can develop that for the board to review prior to their next meeting and take action at the next meeting. But I don't see this as anything that we can't do, and I think it'd be something good for the board to have correspondence that should be acknowledged, that has been received, reviewed, and the action needs to be taken. So I think this can be done starting in September, but prior to starting, I'll, I'll have a framework for the board to look at and vote on.
And, and Mr. Chairman, can I follow up? Mr. Montori, I mean, we do that now when we receive correspondence. It's, it's documented, it's dated, they've received, it's all given out to the board. So I think what Ms. Wellman wants to do, and what was being proposed, is to make that more aware to the general public. Is that correct?
If I may, that is correct, and I think also that sometimes, because in the course of a day or a week, some correspondence may come in that we delay in getting back to a resident, that we've received it, that the board has received it, and that's something we need to do better in the office. This just will make sure it's on our radar screen constantly.
Thank you.
Okay. How about, Mr. Kratman? Questions?
I just have a couple of comments. I, I understand and I agree with my colleague, Ms. Wellman, about some of the correspondence should be read. I think we get a number of correspondence from boards, you know, the LRTA, you know, MCOG, all those type of things, and we'll get a number of them that come in from, you know, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, you know, Eagle Scouts, asking us to come to certain things. And we could probably do a better job of reading those out at meetings, you know, we attend those type of events, you know, we go and we applaud, you know, those community groups and, you know, try to attend all the Eagle Scout ceremonies and those type of things, and that's something that we probably could read a lot of things. But then there are a number of things that I think we need to make the public aware prior to them submitting things in. If they, if they're used to sending things in and believe that their letters will remain anonymous, you know, if they have some questions, concerns, well, if we're going to start reading everything to the public, the public should be aware of that prior to doing so. So I think we should come up with some sort of policy if we're going to do that, and if they want to remain anonymous, I believe they should be. If they have concerns, there is a, the last thing I want to do is discourage someone to contact us about a certain subject, a fear of being called out in public. And if they want to, if they have concerns and they have things and they want to remain anonymous and write to us, I still want to have from those people. So I agree with the concept, but I also agree with my other colleague saying, we need to put some framework in place to make sure this works correctly. I'm sure, like Mr. Montori mentioned, he could come up with a idea, and we can put something on our website to make the residents a little bit more aware of the change, and then at that time, I'd consider voting on it. But at this time, I, you know, I believe what we're doing right now is fine, and we can come up with the, we can discuss this and come up with some sort of plan to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman. How about Ms. Tronick?
Thank you. First of all, I think that any thing that we can do to improve our communication with the public is something that we should all, and from the comments of everyone here, are all interested in doing. I appreciate the comments made by everyone else, and I agree, I think of this as God Rails. The guidance will be some God Rails, so that nobody's hitting that third rail. And I appreciate this being brought forward, and I'm looking forward to reading the guidance so that we can address this. What I would like to say is, and I'm not trying to take anything off of the town manager's plate, but we have been pretty inundated with things that have to do, and our next meeting is September 1st, and that's only two weeks away, and we're in the middle of reopening the community for school and all of that. I would just like to say that I would love to have it September 1st, but if it has to wait till our second meeting in September, I would like to give the town manager and his team the time to do this in a thoughtful way, so that once we get ready to pull the trigger, we don't have to go back and reassess. That's my only comment.
All right, good deal. And I guess I'll just close on, you guys covered everything that we kind of talked, socialized collectively. Mr. Kratman made a great point. We get a ton of, ton of emails for activities and we do a ton of things. So it's nice, it would be nice to advertise some of that stuff, but I want to be very careful. Some folks just don't want to put their name on it, because what's the bad word? They could weaponize in it, weaponize it. So I want to be very careful that we put some framework together, and then on our website, you know, when we get to that conclude point, to vote and to institute as such, that the residents are fully aware that whatever they send to us, you know, that we're not going to, they're not going to get in trouble or just get skittish, I guess, to Mr. Kratman's point. So I think that's a very, very valid, valid points across, from, from the board. And to Ms. Wellman's point, I know some of our neighboring colleagues do it, Mr. Montori, so maybe you could put a friendly call into some of the neighboring town managers, because I know they, they're doing this now, they have been doing it, and maybe we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we can just simply steal, or reuse is a better word, that's all.
Me too.
All right. Okay, very good. Yeah. Okay, any other comments or questions? I guess we don't have to, I don't think we have to take a vote. Do we have to take a vote, Mr. Montori? I think that really the next steps here is to pull together some framework, and then we can socialize it at our next meeting. And again, to Ms. Tronick's point, I know you've been extremely busy helping the schools and just with everything in the community, so if it does take a little bit, a little bit of time to put it together, I, I think that's, that's reasonable.
Okay. We'll get going on.
Okay. So I don't think we have to take a.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just add, I want to thank the board for their feedback. I thought they had really good points to include in that discussion, and I particularly don't want to, my interest is not in, in discouraging any communication from residents at all. So I think you all brought up fantastic points, and I look forward to, yeah, that framework and bringing it back and doing the right thing to create a good, a good policy that we can follow. Thank you very much. I appreciate the conversation.
Awesome. Good deal. All right, moving down to the agenda. Ms. Wellman, don't go far. The next order of business is the Human Rights Committee. I think we put mission statement on here, but essentially it's kind of the Human Rights Committee. We can talk about the name and convention, but this is also an agenda item you brought forward, so I'd like to kind of give the floor to you, just to explain to the residents and the board kind of what this is all about.
Thank you so much. So I brought this up back in July, I think, and we put it on the agenda tonight, and I just wanted to say, one, one quote I'm reading from a book right now is, kind of signals how my mind works around why I brought this forward, and it's sort of, do we settle for the world as it is, or do we work for the world as it should be? So I'm excited tonight to discuss the creation of. And in Tuxbury, and I thank the chair for placing this on the agenda. I thank the town manager for his work in drafting a mission statement and the board for its attention. I'd also like to thank the many residents that came forward, sent their, their comments and support for the creation of a commission. The response, as Mr. Kelly had alluded to earlier with our caller, has been tremendous. In our efforts to raise awareness and help make Tuxbury a more welcoming and inclusive community, the creation of a Human Rights Commission, or Advisory Committee, or similar town-appointed organization is a positive proactive step that this board can take. We can create this commission to ensure that all residents enjoy equal opportunity regardless of race, color, ancestry, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, age, religion, marital family or military status, socioeconomic status, or disability. The HRC would advocate against unlawful discrimination in housing, employment, education, public accommodations, town services, banking, credit, healthcare, and so forth. One of the things the HRC could do would include starting events like Martin Luther King Junior Day, International Women's Day, Pride Month, and host community dialogues on race, antisemitism, human trafficking, mental health, and so forth. The commission or committee can partner with groups in town and raise awareness around legislative issues happening at the state level, as they would affect our residents. At a time when we are grappling with the issues of a pandemic, our nation is also experiencing social discord on race and ethnicity, and Tuxbury sees these issues as well in our families and in our schools and in the community at large. By creating a structured responsive framework of elected officials, town staff, and residents to inform and hold what can sometimes be difficult conversations, we embrace our growing diversity across race, religion, sexual orientation ability, and much more, and well-position ourselves for growth. The town manager has done an excellent job creating a draft mission statement, which I have a few changes, and I know the board has lots of questions and, and, and changes that they'd like to include as well. I'm hoping tonight for strong support to move forward with developing. I'm hoping tonight for strong support to move forward with developing a comprehensive mission and vision, soliciting the input of our superintendent of schools and police chief, and working to incorporate our voices together with those in our community. Not looking for the vote on this particular statement tonight, but to begin this conversation together. Those are my comments. And again, I want to thank the town manager and the board for their attention this evening.
Okay, very good. Okay, let's open up the board for discussion. How about Mr. Brian Dick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Ms. Wellman, for bringing this to the board's attention. You know, I see why, you know, with how the world's been over these last six months and longer, I see why we're discussing something like this tonight. You know, my, I have a, I have the, the mission statement in front of me. I just want to make a couple of comments for the record on, I think this is good framework here and we can build on this together. I like, I don't like having a commission. Personally, I think it's, it's, when you, when you do a commission, it's like trying to fix something. So I love the, the advisory committee, ending of the Tewksbury Human Rights Advisory Committee. I thought, I know the length of term, Ms. Wellman said one year. I don't know if it's going to be reviewed in one year. And to see, maybe we could, we could put a one-year review on this to maybe sit back and see how the committee worked within all the various players that we're recommending beyond this committee, school committee, you know, the schools as well as the town. I, I believe some of the, some of the things that I like to see is the description, like promote Tewksbury's vision of community. I love that. Build a stronger, more unified town. That's what I live for. Foster, respect, civil, public discourse and debate, discourse and debate. I think that's, you know, what we all strive for. I'd love to see them, the shalls turn to mays in some of the areas of document. I love the words helping. I think, you know, when you talk about in, in the mission statement, as a committee, it shall avoid partisan politics and legislative lobbying and litigation. That's very, very important to me. That should be a mediator, someone that sees 50/50 on each side, whatever the issue is. I know this, this committee will report to the selectmen, but I see there's some crossover with the schools when you talk about bullying and they have their own policy. So, and I know it mentions from the town manager's attempt at the mission statement to report to the board of selectmen. I know this is a board committee, so I appreciate that. But I do see the, you know, if it's, if there's a school issue, how does that, how does the selectmen get involved in that? What's the path to that issue, right? So maybe it's, there's a direct, I know there's gonna be a member of the school committee on it proposed. So maybe there's a direct link to be able to address that issue quickly, making the committee well aware before, even sometimes maybe even before the selectmen are aware. The only, finishing up, again, the, you know, there's no, I know you mentioned there's no funding allocated, Mr. Montori. But then it says any funds will need to be town meeting approval, which is, makes a whole lot of sense. But I guess, so Mrs. Wellman, what funding, is there an example of funding needed for something like this? I wouldn't, I don't know if that's even, do we even need that in there? Or is it assumed that there's no funding for this committee? Like, I guess my question is, would, would we need funding? And why would we need it?
It's hard to say, it's hard to say if we need. With most of these mission statements, I keep that language in there just to let the committee know that any funding they would need, would need a type of approval. They don't think they can go off and spend any money. But you just never know with any of these committees. They're gonna need a small amount of money to do some type of a project.
Okay.
Printing costs for our education.
Right.
Brochures, flyers, marketing, things like that.
Okay. And then the, the contract piece, you know, any con, contract. I just felt a little, it was a little weird reading that piece. I guess that's kind of staple that you have as well, Mr. Montori, in, in this type of committee.
Yes.
You can't enter into any contracts, understood, makes a whole lot of sense. What contracts would we even consider entering, you know?
Yeah. Hire someone to help with some type of education or promotion or marketing type of information that they want to get out to the community. Again, it's more of a, of a item in the mission statement so they know not to go and contract something without getting prior approval. Because you'd be surprised how many committees have tried to engage a professional firm or a professional service without talking to us first.
Gotcha, gotcha. So just finishing up, I, as a, you know, to the committee, I think there's some framework here. Using that word a couple of times tonight that we can build on. Some changes, I think Ms. Wellman has some changes that she'll probably talk about. And I, I know, I guess for this meeting, I just took what I thought we were gonna talk about. And I know it's probably not to pick apart the mission statement, but to let you know some of my feelings, my comments, and, you know, that I understand why we're talking about this subject tonight. I'm not in any position, obviously, we're not voting, I'm not in any position of voting on anything tonight. I appreciate the caller's comments. And, and, and then the, the one big thing was the advisory committee, that's, that's big. The last thing is, it's, it looks like a seven-member committee. It seems a little light to me when you think about a community, we only have two members at large. And that might, again, might be a kind of a footprint that the town manager grabbed. But I, I think there might need to be a little, a couple more community members to represent this type of committee. That's all I have, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. I appreciate Mrs. Wellman bringing this to the board. And I appreciate my discussions with Mr. Montori about this and how this can maybe play a part in, in the great community that Tewksbury has, is and has, has been developed. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brendan. How about Mr. Mark Kratman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I'd like to thank Jane for bringing this also to our attention and Brian for your comments. I couldn't agree more with both of your comments. I, I know we received a number of correspondence from the public and I received a couple of calls of my own and a couple of emails and texts of people just reaching out and talking about this constituents and saying, you know, giving their viewpoint on this. This is a great discussion to have. But as I received a number of them, my biggest fear is who haven't I heard from? You know, I, I, I know we just brought this up. I would love to see some sort of public forum that the community could discuss this in an open forum and make sure that everybody from town is heard from. You know, I, I'm not an expert on this in any shape of, form of anything, you know. And I want to hear, you know, I understand we're gonna create this and we're looking at this, but enforcement. You know, if something is brought to, like, if there's recommendations, who moves forward with those recommendations? Is it the police? Is it the schools? Is it the town manager? Is it the selectmen? Is it a ballot question? Is it for town meeting? You know, those are the footprints of what we need to set up with this. And I think we need to hear from the residents to see what they want. Like I said, I'd feel horrible if we were trying to do something great and we left somebody out and we, and somebody wasn't heard from. And I want to make sure that this is open to everybody and we get to hear everybody's point of view on this. So if, you know, if somebody was willing to take the ball with this and run some meetings and have an open forum and have some online meetings or, or when this COVID, hopefully epidemic gets cleared, if we had some public meetings on this, it would be great to listen to everybody. The children in our community are teaching us so much of what they're learning and, and of what they, what they believe the world should be. And I love hearing that. And I want to hear from everyone in this community. And I, I see a lot of things on social media and unfortunately, a lot of it seems to be negativity. I want to see some positivity coming toward this in an open discussion and how everybody can get along and how everybody's point of view matters. And everybody should be heard. So that, with that said, I would like to see something, like I said, I would love to see some sort of open forum to make sure we do not leave anybody out and, and hear from our experts. Because I am not an expert in this. So do we have somebody in the police department? Do we have somebody at the schools? Do we have somebody that has specialized training in this that wants to make some recommendations that I haven't even thought of to how this should be put together? Because I'd like to hear from experts, I'd like to hear from the community of what and how they'd like to be just put together. And once I hear all that information, I think that's the best way to make an informed decision. But I, I do appreciate it. I think this is something that's excellent for our community. But I want to hear from everybody before I personally vote on something. So, but thank you, everybody. I think this is awesome, moving in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman. How about Ms. Tronick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Jane, big kudos to you for bringing this forward. I really am quite excited about the possibility of this type of endeavor for our community. I completely agree with this being an advisory committee. The one of the, I was listening intently to your opening and have really been paying attention to this issue quite due to my own personal work. It's been getting a lot of attention, so I've been doing a lot of homework and research around this. And your, your quote couldn't have been more eloquently put. One of the things that does concern me that you spoke about is this committee necessarily lobbying on behalf of the town. And I would, again, I'm gonna use the word Godrails because I think we need some Godrails on that. When I look at this mission statement, other than the fact of the words that were pointed out, the thing that excited me most about this was providing a safe place where individuals or group may hear their concerns or complaint in the existence or potential existence of issues within our own town. And quite frankly, I would like this committee to focus on our town because I think that that's what their job is. I, you know, I know that there's a lot of need for state, you know, state improvement in this area. But I would like this committee to focus on what we should be doing because I think we gotta take a baby step in terms of we gotta get it right at home before we can go out and start telling other people how we think it should be done better. So that's one thing that jumps out at me to, I like the idea of a public hearing. Once we get this mission statement together, you know, we could do a big Zoom if we wanted to do that or however you wanted to do that. And then to Mr. Dick's point, I believe, I don't know if I have a revised version, but I believe my version has four at-large members, so it's a committee of nine. But that, again, may need to be 11. I, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what the right number is, but I would like to have more residents than town officials. And I definitely think we need a member of the board of selectmen. We definitely need a school committee member. We definitely need the superintendent or his designee. And same thing with the town manager, and we definitely need the police chief. So that's five right there. So I'd like to just see it shift a little bit more towards the residents because I think that this is really for them and for their work. And then the town people that participate will be their guiding force to help get things done. So I really want to applaud everybody and the town manager on the work. But I'm worried about the lobbying component of this in, you know, doing state legislation and weighing, having this committee weigh in on behalf of the entire town. Makes me a little bit nervous where it's such a new committee and it's such a big job. And length of the term, I, I don't know what, similar to the other comments. I don't know what that should look like because I think that this could be something that we could continue to improve upon. I don't think it should be one and done. So those are my only comments. Thank you. And I too got a lot of play about this from a wide variety of people. And Mr. Chairman, before I turn it over to, back over to you, I've been a little distracted because I'm doing this meeting tonight on my phone because I'm having trouble with my internet. My battery is telling me it's low, so if I lose you, I'll jump back on.
Okay, very good. And I'm trying to look, I think almost every comment was covered. I do like the advisory committee. So just a couple of things that I really want to make sure that we understand, not only as a, as a board, but as a community, is, is around the governance, is around the governance. I like to call it a call flow. You know, ideas are fostered within committees, some are brought within the, through the board for approval. And some, I use the plastic bag example for the beautification committee where they had an idea, you know, and they went to town meeting directly. But I would like to see if we can tighten up, tighten up the governance to some. And I love what Mr., I think it was Mr. Dick said about being apolitical, you know, between the D's and the R's nowadays, you know, you don't, that's why a lot of folks don't like government. And, and I love, I would hope this committee can change that to a 50/50 split. So I would also encourage potentially more individuals or more folks on this committee. I don't know what the number is, but I could see this committee having, being very diverse and, and, and one of maybe our larger committees in town. So again, and the other stuff I don't, we, you, you all shared and talked about. Ms. Wellman, one quick comment. I know this is, this is prevalent across different other communities. Are you familiar with other communities? Like my, my thought process was just like, I think we mentioned about talking maybe to Wilmington about some of the stuff we talked about earlier is just sitting with an elected official from a different community and saying, how does this work? How long has it been in play? You know what I mean? To answer a lot of these questions, I think that will really help with the framework. Because I think a lot of these communities have already stood up a, a, a like committee.
That's so, yeah, that's a great question. And I have a couple of other things to add. But to answer your question, Newton's had one since 1973, so 47 years. And their, their committee has evolved well beyond what, what we would be doing. Redding has one, it's, it's an advisory committee in Redding. And they also have like nonprofit groups in the community that do different work that might be more to the political side. My interest in bringing this forward is, is that three-legged stool, if you will, right? You need three legs for it to stand. And it's the residents and it's the staff and it's the elected officials all working together. And, you know, the, the accountability of open meeting law has to be followed. You know, we have to follow ethics and legal procedures. So all of that kind of structure inherent in this committee. To Mr. Dick's point, we're not, this is not a political committee. We don't want it to be political. To Ms. Tronick's point, not to advocate for the town on legislative issues, but to inform the committee about things that may affect the committee that's happening at the state level. So just, that's a quiet, maybe a softer distinction, but no, I'm not looking for, for a political committee here. And so I want to be very clear to your, to you and to the community. And we should make sure that the structure of this committee reflects that very clearly. And to your point, so this is, this, this document, this mission statement is a starting point. It is absolutely not a finishing point. And I think Mr. Kratman's point of a, of a public hearing is, is well taken. And I, I think that we should do that. I would maybe do it by webinar down, you know, we can do that later when we have, again, some different options that we're gonna bring forward. We see that the public has had, has been very vocal in, in giving us a lot of information unsolicited. So I suspect that we'll have a fair, a fair turnout, any kind of public- So I suspect that we'll have a fair, a fair turnout at any kind of public hearing like that. So anyway, Mr. Kelly, I'm sorry if you want to finish your comments and then I'll finish mine.
No, I, I think I'm good. Like I said, a lot of it was repetitive. It was covered. So I don't know if Mr. Montori, if you have anything you would like to say? If, if you'd like to jump in if you're good? Okay. I think he said he's good at this time.
Yeah, I'm also.
Very good. All right. With that being said, we talked about, you know, we talked about going to the different stakeholders. I caught, I captured that. So maybe Ms. Wellman, what's your guidance for the board? How would you like to take next steps potentially for this committee?
Sure.
Of this committee?
Well, one of the things I also want to talk about when we're talking about makeup of the committee, I think everybody said they wanted to have it be bigger and I, that resonates with me as well. I do think that we may want to have a, maybe have a town employee on this committee that's appointed by the town manager. That might be that human services person or their HR or something like that. We might want to have a high school student appointed upon recommendation of the superintendent. We may want to have one of our seniors appointed by the director of the council on aging. And at least one member of the LGBTQ community come forward and, you know, a minority. So I think that, you know, we can, we can explore what that, what that makeup looks like in the community. And I'm not fixed on that, but I think we could be more inclusive and give some more opportunity. That's something that other communities have done. They've kind of defined what they want the makeup of the community to be, of the committee to be. So I'm hearing a lot of advisory committee. People are comfortable with that language. My, my feeling is that we can take this document and edit it a bit and incorporate some of the language and the thoughts that the board has included tonight as a working document, as a draft document, not something that's, we're going to vote on. And then send it to the town, to the school committee, to the superintendent of schools, to the police chief and then any other particular stakeholders we can think of to ask for their feedback. And I understand from Mr. Dorington that there's a caller. So that would be
Okay.
And, and look for feedback.
So I would assume, so the resident section is all, however, do we have a resident for this particular agenda item?
I believe we do, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, I'll allow it. Let's break the rules. So just for the record, name and address, please, for the record?
Ball Payne, 94 Rogers.
Okay, proceed. Thanks for calling.
Just a couple of quick points. I've been listening to all of you. Great discussion. The first caller, and that's my first concern specifically pointed out child sex trafficking. And I was wondering if maybe we could have the chief or someone from TPD come in and discuss what our issues might be in Tewksbury with child sex, child sex trafficking? Because I'm not, I'm a lifer on it. I've never heard of any issues. So that'd be my first thing. My second question will be, who actually determines who sits on this committee? So that, that's my second question. I have questions. I'm going to hang up and let you all talk about it.
All right. Thank you very much for calling in.
I think we're months, if not years away from a committee like this because nothing's actually been discussed so far about any actual accomplishments that other towns have had with similar committees. And I think that's important. And then once again, you, you still need to work on the mission statement. So I think these are some, some good talking points that need to be discussed in depth as well as how many members. I know initially you said seven members and then nine members. But, you know, what's the actual number and who determines who's going to be on that board?
No, I definitely appreciate the comments. I mean, you're saying some of the same stuff that we're asking. So we want to make sure that we understand every aspect of this committee, like all committees within town. We pretty much understand every aspect, their roles, responsibilities, you know, and what they're focused on. And right now I think this is the first stab at it. We have to get all that right before I'm comfortable. I think seems like the board's comfortable moving forward and so I appreciate the comments.
Right. And additionally, you know, I don't want to see another board with another tax expense, another tax burden to the citizens in Tewksbury wasted. So this needs to be looked at heavily. It's a human rights issue. And I think really all these meetings need to be held face to face. And that's going to be well after this whole COVID-19 thing is all over with. Because, you know, we're going to be face to face. We're going to be human, human to, to talk about it honestly.
Amen. I cannot wait for that moment. Trust me, trust me. So, but, but exactly. So points well taken. Again, thank you very much for calling in and points well taken. Thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And I, Ms. Wellman, I believe we want, I always want to let the residents in. But Ms. Wellman, we, I just had your name written down that you were speaking, so I apologize for that. But I wanted to hear the resident. So anything else on your side, Ms. Ms. Wellman? You were kind of outlining maybe next steps for the board?
Right. I thought that next steps will be to start working on this document. I don't know if the board wants, if anybody else has interest in working on this right now or I can continue working with the town manager on this framework. I'm happy to work with anybody and sending it off to other stakeholders in town for their initial feedback.
Feedback from the board. I'm very comfortable with that, Ms. Wellman. If you continue to work with Montori and all the stakeholders, we just talked about the superintendent, chief of police, and there might be a heck of a lot more as you continue to go through this and understand what the other communities do. So any other questions or comments from the board? I don't necessarily think we need to take a vote, but any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
First of all, I would like to, just to, for the caller's perspective, the board of selectmen, the person, the people who appoint to the, any committee in town. So we will be the appointing authority. I just want to make sure that we answered that question. And to the question about sex trafficking, I don't know if Mr. Montori could weigh in now or if she could address that at our next meeting, just since it was raised.
Mr. Montori, I'll take that one. For me, that was just a public comment. And again, we're not obligated to respond or not respond. Let's be honest. If you put on the news, you see it and that's probably was near and dear to the, to the, to the, to the residents. So I don't think we need to take it a step further.
That. Thank you.
Mr. Montori, I don't know if you have anything to add. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Chairman, I just have one other comment to this.
Please.
I commend Ms. Wellman for taking this up and bringing it on. He said, I still have a little bit of fear that we're missing some, a group. And I know that we, you're actively talking to stakeholders, but I honestly don't know who all the stakeholders should be. And so maybe we should put something up on the website or something on the thing to reach out to us. And in case we are missing somebody, I don't want to have a, you know, reach out and say, I was never heard from. I have something to say about this, you know, and, you know, and there may be some sort of group that, you know, I'm unaware of or somebody that just has a strong feeling on this. I want to hear every, every, everybody in the community should have a, a voice in this. And, you know, if there's something that, you know, maybe if we, for every other committee, we have a website of something. So maybe like an exploratory link or something. If you want to reach out to us or have someplace where they can submit comments or concerns or recommendations on how we should build this. I'd love to hear from everybody on how we could do it. And then, you know, if Selectmen Wellman would like to take that and move forward with it, I, I would encourage her to do so. I think she's doing a great job and I'd support her going forward. But I just want to make sure you have all the tools to make sure you reach everybody in the community.
Okay. I mean, for me, this is like, you know, the seed was planted. We'll pour a little water on it. But Mr. Krab, Mr. Krabman, I'm quite certain that we'll have many more public hearings. So I think the immediate next steps were for Ms. Wellman to continue to work with Mr. Montori on the framework, reach out to the stakeholders identified in the framework and other stakeholders you may identify as you continue through this journey and see how does committee look like. And, and, and then when that's ready, we'll bring it back to the selectmen, have another public forum and just go from there. This might take several meetings. Who knows? Maybe a home run, it takes the next meeting. But let's just talk about the meeting, next steps. And I think that's the game plan moving forward. Does that sound reasonable to the board, Mr. Brian Dick and Ms. Tronick?
Yeah, look, I'd like to just comment. Yeah, I, I think the next step, and I understand Mr. Krabman's concern. And I think what's, we've taken the, this is the second meeting we've discussed it. And I feel confident that Mrs. Wellman is going to be able to reach those people. And I think we've voiced that concern. And my next expectation would be a more robust, you know, not, nothing lengthy on the mission statement, but I can provide my feedback that I talked about tonight to Mrs. Wellman. So I can document it to her in an email. I'll just give you a couple of comments and you can filter it if you think so. My expectation is, like you said, Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Wellman is going to work with Mr. Montori. Feel very, very confident in that partnership. And I think all the board members can weigh in. They've had some great comments. If Mrs. Wellman hasn't already recommend, wrote that, wrote that stuff down. But my, my next expectation is maybe the next meeting or the meeting after, like Mr. Kelly said, it may, may take five meetings or whatever, but let's just keep building on that document. Thank you.
Okay. And for this one here, you keep me honest, team. I don't think this requires a vote. I think we have next steps determined and look forward to discussion at a future, future meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wellman. Okay. Next order of business is the, is a new, another committee, a new committee. This is the general bylaw review committee. For those residents that are very familiar, we have a zoning bylaw committee. Actually, Mr. Krabman, maybe you can keep me honest. How long have we had the zoning review bylaw committee? It's been three years?
Been longer than that.
But, okay. But the point is here is pretty simple. We have our general bylaws. We haven't then reviewed those in, Mr. Montori, you have to keep me honest here. Is it 19 years? Is it, I have the date scratched somewhere, but it's been forever and a day that we reviewed the general bylaws. So this, the whole premise of this committee is pretty simple. Get a committee, a committee together, very much like the zoning bylaw committee have reviewed all the zoning bylaws. That committee makes their recommendations through the selectmen and ultimately they're voted on a yea or nay through town meeting, not the selectmen or not that committee. But that committee really does all the heavy lifting and dirty work to go through all the different hundreds, hundreds, hundreds of general bylaws to see which ones are, you can toss out which ones need to be re-updated. I call it general housekeeping for documents. And I know a lot of us do that in the private sector. So, Mr. Montori, I do not have the mission statement in front of me here. But just for the public, do you happen to have the mission statement in front of you, Mr. Montori or any of the select board?
I have it.
Okay. Do you want to just give a quick read again, just the framework, just at a high level? We don't need to review the whole thing, but I think it's important to know how many folks are on there? Which folks will be on there? Who will be appointed?
Sure. So it's opposing five members appointed by the board. It says a one-year length of term of whenever the work is completed, whichever sooner. They would have a chair, a vice chair, clerk determined by the committee. And the meeting time would be determined by the committee. So it would be in accordance with open meeting law. The review, the intention is to review the entire town of Tewksbury general bylaws, nothing to do with the zoning side, and make recommendations for updates or changes for a future town meeting. The committee shall meet with stakeholders affected by any specific bylaw for input and recommendations. The committee will determine if a consultant is needed and work with the town manager to seek funding for town meeting. At the conclusion of the work, the committee will submit a report to the board of selectmen and meet with the board of selectmen regarding review and suggested changes. There's a number of initiatives and goals, but one of them is determine if a consultant is needed, review existing and recommended updated language, hold public meetings on the draft, prepare a final report, present the report to the selectmen, hold public meetings on a final report and bring it forward to town meeting. So in the same boilerplate is here as for all the other committees vis a vis funding and contracts, et cetera. So, so that's, that's all there. And this is, this is something that the board's talked about doing for a while. It's, it's some homework. We have a lot of, we have a number of bylaws that are outdated and need to be, need to be brought in line with the 21st century. And not to be facetious, but some of the, some of the language is quite, quite old and is a hindrance to the business of the staff and the town. So this would be a way to start seeking some of that. I'm not sure that we need to do a wholesale rewrite of the bylaws all at once. Myself, my opinion is we start looking at it and start tackling things one at a time. Unlike the zoning, which is so interdependent and has to be kind of a whole document, the bylaws are a little bit more topical and so you can address them as needed. And I think that we can bring forward, you know, different bylaws at different town meetings and just kind of, it can be more iterative. It doesn't necessarily have to be a wholesale approach. But whatever the, the board is interested in pursuing, it's up for discussion. But I think it would be a really good thing to kind of get the ball rolling on this one for the sake of the town and to start looking at these bylaws. It's a, it's a lift.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Wellman. Any other comments from the board, board members? Why don't we start with Mr., how about Ms. Tronick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree. We actually tried to tackle this many years ago. I remember us having conversations about this and we did a few one-offs, but then it got put aside because other business takes priority. So I appreciate this. The one thing that I would like to see is that the town manager and his team put together a pretty comprehensive policy and procedure manual that I think could dovetail into some of this work. And we could kind of take some of those draconian ideas that are in the bylaws, as you said, that are so old and hinder. And that might be a way to decide what the priorities are. I don't know if that's helpful or not helpful, but I would love to see that those, that policy and procedure be enhanced by addressing outdated bylaws. And I really applaud the work. So it's going to be a, a big lift. And I appreciate Jane's approach to one-offing these because I think it's a much better way to address them. And I just am excited about this work.
Heavy lifting. How about Mr. Brian Dick? Comments? Questions?
Yeah, no, no questions. I understand the, the idea behind it makes sense. It's a, it's a whole lot of work. So I, you know, I support it. So if it's something the board wants to pursue, I'm, I'm in favor of that. But I have no further questions. I understand some of the, you know, what Ms. Wellman is saying about some of the old wording, all that stuff. So makes sense.
Okay, very good. How about Mr. Krabman?
I got no comments. I think it's a great idea to take a look at these things. But I got, you know, this has been pretty straightforward. So I have no comments on it. Thank you.
I'm, I'm the same here. I think this was also socialized during, I think, our July 15th meeting. And obviously we put on the agenda and only, the only, a lot of the comments were because everyone's so used to the zoning bylaw committee doing so much heavy lifting. And Ms. Wellman, you had a great point. They're all interdependent. Sometimes if you change zoning here, it's going to impact, you know, like the domino effect. I think this one here, not so much. You know, you can look at, I'm just pulling this out there like a, a, a policy on dogs or bylaws on, on dogs or pets and take that. So what I'm saying is you don't have to put people on the committee for two or three years for this one. I think it's a no brainer. I think you can take it in chunks. I do think it's a lot of heavy lifting. I don't think it's fun work. And I, well, almost, I think the zoning bylaw committee did also have a consultant. And I would see probably no different how we would not want to bring a consultant in. Because think about it, you know, 300 towns and communities in, in Massachusetts, someone has done this recently. Some town or community has done this. So it's a lot of heavy lifting. So I'm all for it. It's overdue. And, and, and I applaud anyone that would like to, love to be on this committee because it's a lot of work. So that's being said, I think we're, I, I'm very comfortable with the mission statement. Mr. Montori, thank you for drafting that. I think it's pretty straightforward. So what's the pleasure of the board? Do we want to ta, do we need to table this for further discussion? Are you, are we all comfortable voting now? What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I recommend that we approve the formation of the bylaw committee review as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wellman. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Jane Wellman?
Aye.
And the, and the chair votes aye as well. So Mr. Montori, I'll work directly with you and we'll, we'll get things rolling in that committee and advertise it to the residents and, and we'll go from there. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Last on the new business is, we had an item here commemorative, commemorative. is, we had an item here commemorative, commemorative India's independence. So just very quickly, we did, we talked about correspondence emails earlier. We get a lot of them. This was a correspondence email. It was essentially from the India Association of Greater Boston, known as I A G B. What they asked for was to raise a flag on our commons, an Indian flag, in lieu of their Independence Day for their country. It was August 15th. Mr. Montori and I did discuss this. And unfortunately, we have three flags in our commons. You know, we have the United States of America flag, we have the Massachusetts Commonwealth flag, and we have the POW MIA flag. So unfortunately, we don't see how we could do that. You know, but I wanted to just socialize with the board. My recommendation would, would be for this board, just to dedicate, you know, that, that day within our town, just recognizing the Independence Day. And again, that's August 15th for the, it's commemorative India's, India's Independence Day on August 15th. So I'll pause there. But any questions from the board, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Is it possible that we put a message on our web, on our beautiful sign in the center of town for that day? I know that it runs through a cycle, but I don't know. Maybe we could do something electronically.
Yeah, just like, we, we talked about this. I think I want to be a little bit careful because then the question is what precedent do we set? You know, we have so many nationalities now within our community, you know, where do we say no and, and yes? So we just wanted to be careful, you know, again, we have three flag polls. So if you want to make that a motion, that's fair. But again, I just want to be very careful, you know, of what precedent we set. We talked about the bylaw committee review. This would be a perfect thing. What do we do for these type of things where, you know, it's a cultural event, whatever the case may be, whether it's a flags, a celebration, you know, we don't want to say no, but we don't have a policy. And at this point, I can't see, you know, bringing any of those three flags down right now. Again, what precedent will we set for all nationalities? So, but again, I'm recommending that we declare it, you know, dedicate that day in Tewksbury on behalf of Tewksbury Selectmen. But any, any other comments, Mr. Kratman or Mr. Brian Dick or Ms. Wellman?
I, I, Mr. Chairman, I agree with your point. I think we want to be careful on precedent setting with all the different types of celebrations. Those three flags are very sacred to the town. So I agree with you to leave those as is. And I like your recommendation declaring August 15th, which I think is a Saturday. That's a great idea. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
How about Ms. Wellman?
I think your solution is apropos and fitting with what we're doing in the community. I have no issue with putting it up on an electric signboard either as to Ms. Tronick's point, or putting it on our website on the calendar. There's, there's a business calendar, but then there's sort of a, you know, a community calendar. And I know we have members, we have, we have residents in town that were born in India and that's partly an important holiday for them. So I think that there's something to be said for that inclusivity.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments. How about, how about Mr. Mark Kratman?
I, I, I like your motion of, you know, just, we're, we're making, we're making the residents aware of it. It's, you know, we're bringing it forward in our selectmen's meeting. But I also believe that we need to come up with a policy for that signboard. And I would hate to have somebody come up and say, you did this for somebody. How come you're not doing it for me? And we're not, and we don't have the capability of doing that. I do like using the signboard. I like putting in town events. I like, you know, putting in for school events, town events, what we're doing in, especially if we have traffic. We have a lot of things that are going on in this town where we have construction or delays and we get a lot of things that are going to be happening over the next couple of months with school going back and construction happening with the new school and everything else. And I would hate to say no to somebody because we need that board for doing something. And yet we did it for somebody else. You know, so I, I don't want to be negative towards something like that. I, I do want to honor that day with them. And, and I think, you know, making a mention of that to the town and saying, you know, we recognize that day and well, Tewksbury is a fine thing to do at this point.
And then like, I think as an example is like autism awareness, we do that as well. Very, very similar. So we do that for, for, then that's just one that just pops right up. So, so with that being said, what's the, what is the pleasure of the board?
I, I'd like to make a motion that we recognize the day sent into us and, you know, make a mention of it at a town meeting and put, you know, when we commemorate that day and make it a, that we recognize that day in the town of Tewksbury.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman.
So I'd like to second Mr. Kratman's motion to commemorate India's independence on Saturday, August 15th.
Very good. So I have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I would like, just like to say that I agree with my colleagues about the signboard and I would like to make that the first one of the, I don't know if that is in a bylaw. I don't think we even addressed it in a bylaw, but I would like us to think about that, maybe not for the next one, but point well taken. So I appreciate the colleagues and the comments on that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tronick. Okay. So I have a motion, a second. So let's do a roll call vote. Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, team. I know it's getting a little bit late here, but we have still some business to take care of. I believe it's Mr. Montori, Town Manager section.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things. The first item is the senior town council invoice for June 2020 in the amount of $1,333.83. I'd recommend approval.
Have a motion by Ms. Wellman. Do I have a second by Mr. Kratman?
Second, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call vote. Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Mark Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Jane Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well.
The next item is an invoice for a town council for July 1st through July 15th, the amount of $2,252.50. I would recommend approval.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wellman. And, and, okay, thank you. Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Okay, Mr. Montori?
Okay. I'm going to just see if, I'm going to try to share something on the screen for the board. Can you see that? No?
Not yet. I think Jake, does he have permission to share?
You all have permission to share. There you go. Nice. Okay.
Hold on. Yep. So that's the first one. So this is a document for the energy aggregation plan that the board approved at their last meeting. Over the last few weeks, we have received public comments on the plan. And based on some of the comments, we read, we adjusted the goals for the plan to be clearer than the previous goals we had, to add goals in there that discussed renewable energy options, allowing for the support of procurement of renewable energy through renewable energy certificates or a direct investment. So these kind of developed from some of the discussions we've had since the plan was posted. These goals are similar to what other communities have put into their plan and that have been approved by Department of Public Utilities. So I wanted to bring those forward. If the board was comfortable, we would change the goals we have in the current plan with these new goals. We would put the plan back up on the website as, as amended and we would probably, we would let it go for another three weeks for any other comments.
Questions from the board? Seeing none. What's the pleasure of the board?
I would like to make a motion to accept the new goals for the energy aggregation plan as presented by the town manager tonight.
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Tronick. Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Okay. Thank you very much. And
Thank you very much.
Business, Mr. Montori?
See if I can get this. Okay. Can everyone see that? Land sales?
Perfect. Yep.
So at town meeting in May, I'm in June, actually, we, the town meeting approved the, or authorized the board of selectmen to sell certain parcels of land. These are the parcels that were identified in the warrant article. I would like permission from the board to move forward with this land sale, with the exception of the two parcels highlighted in yellow. There has been some questions or concerns from abutters of those two parcels that I would like to work out. And if they can be worked out, we'll bring those parcels back at a future date. But I'd like to move forward with all of the other parcels. We do have land that town meeting approved and the board authorized for sale that we would include in the next land sale. If the board approves these, these parcels tonight, I'm going to meet, I'm going to meet with senior town council on Thursday to finalize the process and start the solicitation for, for sale of these, these parcels. In addition, on this document, below this, these, the list of parcels, is the, are the items that we use for the price of the sale. We use the assessors of fair market value, price for the land. We add town council's cost for doing work on the sale of the land, estimated to be approximately $750. We have a recording fee of $125. We added administrative cost of 10%. And then we add the actual cost for advertising if we need to advertise in the newspaper. So if the board is comfortable and they could approve the sale of these parcels, with the exception of the two that are listed, as well as the price of sale that, that we have listed, we'll move forward with this starting this week.
Comments from the board? Questions?
Any quick questions?
Please, Ms. Wellman.
Thank you. Just really quickly, Mr. Montori, the price of the assessed value that's listed here is different than what was in the warrant at town meeting. And I didn't know if that already included these figures below, or if you could just kind of speak a little bit to that change.
Yeah. So what I did, the values and the assessors records were updated since, since the warrant article was put together. So I just updated the values for the board to see. And they will use, and they will use these when we go out to, to sell the land. There were a couple of parcels that we previously had authorized that need further review because we're not sure if they're buildable or not. But these are just updated since the last, since the article was drafted.
Okay. Cause it, yeah, there's a, that's a, some of them are kind of a big change. But so this value is then the basis on top of which the additional costs for the price of sale would be.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. I would make the motion that we permit these items, excepting the two items that are highlighted for sale.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Montori, is that?
That's it.
That's it on your side? Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. All right. It brings us down to minutes. I don't believe we have any minutes. So let's go to board member reports. We'll start at the top. Mr. Brian Dick?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you, though.
Okay, very good. How about Mr. Kratman?
I'm staying with Mr. Dick. I have nothing to report tonight. Meetings aren't scheduled to the end of the month.
Very good. How about Ms. Tronick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to report that tomorrow we will be having an elementary school building committee. I can tell you that the project is well underway. And I want to thank the project manager and the construction manager and the design team, mostly the construction manager who's been working with the abutters around the noise levels and things like that. I think it's going fairly well and they have been doing a lot of work, talking to people, and I truly appreciate that. So I just want to make sure that if residents do have concerns, if they could please contact the town manager's office and he will make sure that those concerns get addressed. He's been fantastic at making that happen. The board is meeting tomorrow at 4:30 if anybody's interested. And right now we are showing that the project is in good financial stead. So just kind of want to make sure that that's going on as well. I do have a question for Mr. Montori. I know that the school committee voted on their plan and I know that he, as well as the other, his department heads have been working on the reopening. And I would just like to just give a quick shout out for people who are listening. I believe it's a hybrid model. Is that correct, Mr. Montori?
That is correct.
So that means that our kids would be going to school as if for the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday off, and the other half going Thursday, Friday, with the off days being remote?
That, that's what's being discussed. Nothing has been finalized, but that's what's being discussed at the moment.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought that, so the school committee only voted on the hybrid model, not what it's going to actually be?
Yes. My understanding is they've just voted on the hybrid model. There were, there were a couple of choices, but enough, they're still working out those issues.
Okay, great. Thank you. I know that the plans aren't due till Desi, until the Friday, I believe it is. Anyway, I want to thank everybody who's been working so hard on that plan. I know it's a heavy lift. So I appreciate your work and your department heads working with the school department to make that happen. So it's going to be, you know, it's a big change for our families.
Thank you. The superintendent, the assistant superintendent, as well as the administration and the school committee doing incredible amount of work. And I'm not sure everyone could appreciate the amount of work and what they have on their, their plate on this issue. So they've done a terrific job so far.
I agree. And so I just want any other support that we can give them, if you could let them know that we'd be happy to do that. I'm sure my other board members would concur with that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tronick. How about Ms. Wellman?
I think I will join my colleagues, Mr. Dick and Mr. Kratman. And see, the public has probably heard enough of me talking tonight. So I'm all set. I don't have anything to report. We have meetings later this week, this month.
We commend you. You brought a lot of stuff to the board and some good stuff, Jane. So I thank you for that. I have nothing, but I do want to give a little shout out to Mr. Montori. I was just on vacation and to, to you all. I think I still have to reply maybe to one or two residents, but I want to thank you for the board for, for while I was on vacation. I just want to emphasize to you all, I think you all know, and to the residents, how much Mr. Montori does on a daily basis. You know, so I think he's been running hot. So I wanted to call him out. I know he doesn't like those type of plugs, but Mr. Montori has not gone unnoticed, the level of work. I, I mean, going back to March. And so I think you need a well deserved vacation. So try to plan one, but I truly, I truly want to thank you, Mr. Montori. I get to work with you very closely every day on so many issues. And another day today, you come in at seven and I'm sure you'll be working till 10. So I can't, you've done a lot. You've been running hot. So I just want to recognize and, and thank you for that. And like I said, that's your homework assignment. Do take a vacation. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
With that being said, team, thank you very much. I'll look for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion, Mr. Kratman, and I have a second by Ms. Tronick. All, last final.